Parker?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement?
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place and the agenda was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting.
Consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature fully approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following as referenced in 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4. Items of new business to the agenda?
There are none.
Minutes?
I did not see any errors to the minutes of our June 1 regular meeting.
Any interaccount transfers?
We have one interaccount transfer with our senior 2019 class. That money will be transferred to our class of 27, I believe it is, which will be our sixth graders.
And what's surplus items?
We have surplus items from Lincoln and Washington. And they're whole, got some old copier equipment. It's from Lincoln and some old computer equipment from Washington.
What do you think of this?
Um, Washington, we had some old reading materials. There's some old workbooks. They went back and really tried to clean out behind the stage. Um, makes me go back there.
Is there a motion? A motion will accept as presented. Items 3.1 to 3.4.
My second day.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
4.1, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds. 4.1, general fund number 11 is referenced. 4.2, building fund number 22 as referenced. 4.3, child nutrition fund number 22 as referenced. And 4.4, gift fund as referenced.
Okay, 4.1, our general fund. A couple of expenditures to point out to you all. Purchase order number 672, um, computer dealers, those are Chromebooks. 673 was T-Mobile Hotspot. And 678, Mohawk USA, that's Chromebook bags. And so all, all of those purchase orders right there that you see are for virtual learning, but they also are reimbursable through our CARES money. And so we will continue, we still have CARES money that's left to be spent. And we're looking at some different things to help us in the event of virtual learning or upgrading our technology. I'll tell you, one of the things that this is going to do with our Chromebooks, we're, we're going to move towards one device. And the reason for that is it allows us to manage everything. And it's going to help our IT department. It's going to help Trevor be able to manage those devices, make sure they're safe, secure. And so I really appreciate Trevor, lot of work and time spent, and really all of our administrators as we, we've looked at how we can spend that CARES money to help us in the event that we would have to go into virtual learning. 677, treat solutions, maintenance supplies. So that is a purchase order for our fall. Custodial supplies. I will tell you that in the coming weeks, you will see some more supplies that we are ordering just to ensure that we have the necessary cleaning and disinfectant and sanitization that we need. Are there any questions about the general fund?
I just have a question on the T-Mobile Hotspots. When the state closed us back in March, they kind of gave some leeway. And I know the CARES money has come out to help alleviate. Do you think if him forbids something, were to back up and they said, okay, we're going the wrong direction, they would close us down, that any of that would be freed up like it was previously or no?
I wouldn't know.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know, Mrs. Kane. So we're, one of the things that we felt like it was really important, that we're going to encourage folks because there will be some, there will be plans that many providers will have. But we also want to make sure that no student or staff member doesn't have the opportunity to have access to remote learning. And that's our thinking behind it.
That's great. I'm just curious. I didn't know what the powers that be above us are thinking. So thank you.
Good question on the treat solutions. Does, can CARES, can any of that money pay for its supplies or is it?
Yes, it can. And so we have used, so we purchased, uh, it would have been, it's been a while now, but we purchased some electrostatic sprayers. And these are backpack sprayers. So they're larger than the ones we purchased prior. And we have gone back and you probably saw that purchase order, I'm going to say a month or so ago. And you can go back and still use that money. That CARES money can go back and use and be paid for with that special sprayer. So, and there's, there's a chance that we eventually could, if we're not able to use our technology money the way that we want to, then we might go back and we might put this treat order in that and be reimbursed for it. I really want to try to use as much of the CARES money for academics and instruction and teacher growth. But we kind of got to see what, what's out there.
And accessibility, yeah.
And, and what we can get.
Sure.
Okay, what about your fund? Child nutrition?
Uh, one purchase order out of child nutrition fund. That was for bid notice for food service. And we have nothing out of our gift card.
Motion?
I make a motion. We approve the purchase order encumbrances as referenced in 4.1 through 4.4.
Say.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
I.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, we have one resignation to report. That is from Chastity Ugrich, a third grade teacher. Chastity has been a really good teacher and employee, but she's got some other opportunities. And so we wish Chastity the best of luck. And then I want, just for a brief minute, I want to try to talk to you all just for a second about our different learning options. And, as luck would have it, okay, here are our three different learning options. And I wanted to give this to you this week so that you would be able to review these. And on July 6th, Mr. Feely and Ms. Martini will be here to answer any questions that you might have. If you'll notice at the bottom, a committee has met and spent a lot of time, and really unbeknownst to us, just started back in the fall, and has spent a lot of time working on some different learning options. And so you can see there, there's a traditional onsite instructional option. There's an option two, which is a blended online and onsite instruction option for grades six through 12. And then there's an option three, a full virtual option. And so I want to thank that committee, and I'm going to mention their names. Mr. Feely, Mr. Smith, Ms. Martini, Dr. Genlick, Mrs. Kane, Mr. Gale, Mr. Brandt, Mrs. Weisswander, Ms. Sider, and Mrs. Woods for the time that they've spent. And so I want to give you an opportunity to review that. Be thinking of any questions that you might have for Mr. Feely and Mrs. Martini. And they will be here on the 6th to answer any of those questions.
Should we, there are three resignations on here. Should we make note of those? Taylor?
I, I apologize. Yes, we should. Um, so Jennifer Taylor, excuse me, she has another opportunity and will continue to help us coach softball and basketball. And so she will be leaving us as a paraprofessional. And then Karen Me, Karen Me, longtime employee. I was very fortunate to get to work with Karen. She will be sorely missed. And we just wish her the best of luck. She has a great opportunity to be with grandkids and has promised me that she will come back and help me in any way that she can and ever she can. And so we're, we're really going to miss her. And I apologize for skipping over those.
That's okay. I want to just make sure of knowledge.
Yes, yeah.
We appreciate all three of them for this to our district. Items of current business? Discussion possible for an actual vote to enter into a contract with Keystone Food Service for the 2021 school year.
And so while Ms. Owen goes back and is getting representatives from Keystone, I just want to talk to you a little bit about this process and how we were able to work through it together. We started on this really a few years ago and have kind of been investigating it and looking into it. We were able to meet with our cooks and gain some input and visit with them about this process and let them know what all this would entail. And so I know that many of them are very excited about this opportunity. I know that I am. I think that it will, it's a, it's a great change for our district. And I asked the representatives from Keystone just to come and to talk to you a little bit about what kind of service that they would bring to us. And so I'm going to let them introduce themselves. And then they will kind of give you a brief introduction, talk about their company, and then kind of have a Q and A. If you have any questions, I know they'll be more than happy to answer them. So we'll start with Dawn. And Dawn Frank, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Dawn Frank, and I work in the new business development office. Prior to coming to Keystone, I was in, at Career Tech in the STEM office for about 20 years.
I'm Casey McCoy, and I'm, my title is the Vice President of Operations. So I kind of started ordering at Keystone, kind of on the bottom level, where I slowly moved my way up. I'm kind of a manager over, well, I have a lot of different areas in the state. So, but that's kind of my role.
I'm Ralph Baker, and my title's Regional Manager, but that doesn't, still doesn't mean anything to me. I don't want it to mean anything to you. What it should mean to you, if we're fortunate enough to come to Alba, I'll take care of you. I was a teacher and a coach for 34 years. And the last six years I've been with Keystone, you know, I got to teach kids and I got to coach kids. Now I get to help feed kids. And, you know, I know what goes on in schools. I'd like to say I've seen it all. Haven't quite seen it all, but you know, I mean, so when, when schools tell me, Ralph, guess what happened? You know, it, it does it shop. And we, we can work at it. We can take care of that. Been there, done that. And so I just want, I mean, that's kind of what I bring to the table. I couldn't spill, I couldn't spill food when they hired me, you know? And so I've got other people that, that's their role, you know, that'll be here at Alba, hopefully. But that's, that's me.
I'm going to hand out packets for you guys. And with everything that's going around, we thought we'd, sure. With everything that's going on, we're wearing the mask just for, for you all. So I guess I can start and kind of go over some of the finances. Just, that's the first page in your packet there, if you want to look at that. The price that we bid here at Alba is that 331 that you see in yellow. This is just kind of a condensed, the top is showing your cash income, so your, what you're charging your students. Actually, before I continue, this is a projection of what we'd expect your first year to look like. This was your serving numbers. And 10% increase is very conservative for a district that we start at. So that's kind of what these projections are based off of. What we think your first year is going to look like based on the history of the company. So that's your cash income up top. And then your reimbursements from the state are the next item. So then there's your total cash and reimbursements. The 231 is what we're charging per LE. And what that means is every lunch or every supper is at that rate, but every breakfast is half of that. And then every snack, if we did snacks here, would be a third of that price. Moving on down, you can see your commodity credit. So that's basically what the projection is that your commodity credits look like. We would bill you on the invoice. You'd get different amounts back each month as a credit toward, toward your bottom line. And then moving on down, the payroll there, the 162,000 and some extra, that's the projection of what your labor currently is minus your director, because we have staff that'll be in place. We'll bring in the director if, to replace the one that you don't have. So that would be your labor. So the 13,890 is where we'd project you'd be in the first year. Do you guys have any questions about that part before we move past it? These things are hard to breathe through.
They are. But the C and director will actually be housed and live here in Alba?
Yes. Yeah, you will have a person here that's the contact for all of your schools.
But they'll be physically here, not zooming in to cut out fires?
Correct. Yeah, the others, yeah, the other managers that are here supporting your school are just resources for that person. But that director would be here and your onsite contact for all of the school, for all of the schools.
Thank you.
And they are actually employed at Keystone.
Um, well, we have to get your account. So once you guys approve us, then we would hire that director. And we would work with your superintendent to, to figure out who that would be. We wouldn't hire anybody that wasn't approved by him. Yep.
And that payroll expenditure includes all the employees that we currently have on staff?
This one does, minus your director. Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
And that's, that's their benefits, salary and benefits?
Uh, no, that's their salary. Yep.
And we would continue with, all employees are going to stay on our payroll. So one of the things that was really important to us administratively is that we keep all the employees and we continue to pay all benefits, all salary, all teacher retirement for those that have already contributed. Now, as employees retire or leave, then it would be Keystone's responsibility to transition and hire those new employees. Okay?
That way they can keep their benefits here within the school. And the reason benefits are included is because within the school district, you pay them, but you get, you get back. So we just look at the, the actual labor that's on here. Okay, so the 13,890 is kind of where we are projecting you to be. Now, the bottom, as we look forward, your district has over 50%, at least at one of your schools, free and reduced. And so with that, if you have one school within your district that's below the 50%, or I'm sorry, above the 50% free and reduced, your district is eligible for suppers. And so we've kind of talked about this before. I just want to show you a picture of what suppers would look like if that's something that you chose, you know, to do within your district moving forward. So you can see on the, the first column where it says meals, 100. If you just serve 100 suppers, the bottom line down there, the 22,737, is extra revenue that would be brought into your district. And then the next one, I just showed, you know, 200 as well. So depending on how many supper meals that you charge, or I mean, that you were able to acquire, your profit would go up.
If you offered a supper option, would your employee, your payroll expenditures would have to go up with that?
So we would assume that. And so with the increase, then we would be able to pick up the additional employees.
On your?
On our, yeah, that would, so one, we can't go back and have the school hiring employees because of the way the contract's written. So we bid it that, well, all bids of food service. Once you bid that transition piece, when they leave the district, we assume, you know, the next, the new person. So the school can't reassume without redoing the contract. Yep. So we would be responsible for all employees moving forward.
How many additional staff would it take to offer supper?
Um, that kind of depends on the, but it's way more efficient. So usually, we kind of have, we have a lot of schools that do it right now with one person comes in, because it's more of a portable meal or more, because a lot of schools do it in the classroom or something involved with after school or even athletics. They'll take it to the gym, put it in the, put it in the concession stand. And then after athletics, kid's done practicing, they take it and eat it. So we found it's way more efficient. So we have a lot of schools that one person coming in and working an eight hour day can do 250 to 350 meals. So it's in a, it's one, it's kind of a, it's more just buildment. There isn't as much time prepping and cooking and thawing meats and stuff. It's more sandwiches, simpler meals that kids can eat quickly. But it's more than the snack program through the USDA usually has like a package of graham crackers and a drink. This is more like a PB&J sandwich, vegetable, fruit, and a milk.
It's a reversible meal.
All five components.
Yeah, it has. So it's a lot, it's, we kind of call it the super snack, because it's not really necessarily what you'd get like for lunch, but it's a lot more than they get for a snack. And for those kids, there's a ton of districts that you have a lot of kids that you, they get their two meals here at the school. That's it. So then they're eating that third one before they leave here. So you know they're full before they leave.
I wanted to make something about supper just to, to open my eyes and just because it's different than the numbers and how many. But there was a school that I talked to the manager about three years ago, and I go, how are your suppers going? Because at that time, I didn't have any, I didn't know, I mean, I didn't have any schools that did suppers. It was kind of a new thing. And they go, Ralph, we serve more suppers than we do lunches. I go, what? How, you know, how is that possible? But with the suppers being at a school that was over 50% free and reduced, it's free, it's, it doesn't matter who you are. Everybody gets a supper at no charge. I mean, it shouldn't, at the free and reduced charge. So kids that were like, you know, maybe were borderline, they, I don't know, they didn't have enough money to buy their lunch, so to speak, and maybe couldn't eat lunch, you know? That's just hard for me to fathom, but they'd get the supper. So their suppers were more than their lunches. It was just like, you know, I just didn't understand that for a while. And I still, I mean, I understand, but it's just hard for me to kind of grasp that concept. And that happens.
So the regular meal reimbursement for lunch is like 350 if you're a free student from your aid. But on the supper program, you can see down at the bottom under the reimbursements. This year's rate was $3.06475 was the reimbursement that you're getting back. So we're only going to charge you the 231, but then you're going to get back that higher reimbursement. So that's where your revenue is going to go up. And also, we don't have the new rate for the suppers. So know that that rate is actually going to be higher. So your profits will even be more than that.
Oh, they open to the public?
Um, so there's an application that you have to fill out. And so, yeah, if your area qualifies for that, you could, but most of them serve it in the school day, maybe in the last period of the day or around an activity. And so it's, yeah, it's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it has to be a little with us. They're a tie-in with an educational program.
Sure.
You know, there's a little hoop to jump through. They're not major ones. And every school does it differently. We kind of let them handle that, but everybody's a little different. But it's always like the last 15 to 30 minutes of the day, four or five minutes of the day is kind of when, that you typically serve.
So like a reading period or a wind down or something like that, just right before they get on the bus and go home. I don't know about you guys, but at least the area that I'm from, some of those kids ride the bus an hour, you know? And so to get a snack or something right before they get on the bus is, you know, helpful for them. I was going to show you in the, in the book, if you want to flip a few pages through the, the menus, there's one that says super snack, third meal. That's kind of just a sample of what types of things that you might see for that supper program, if that's something that you guys wanted to look at.
But that one is, it's an October 1st to October 1st application date. So that's the, so even if you applied in August for it, you'd have to reapply in October. So we have, any new schools coming on, a lot of them are just going to get through kind of the start transition period and then get ready for that October 1st actual date to implement it. But, so there's some time working behind that.
So it's not grab and go. They must, they physically stay there and eat it.
Yeah.
In the cafeteria.
Uh, it doesn't necessarily, no, it can be, it can be.
Take it to the classroom?
Yeah. Basically, your school campus will be the site, and they can eat anywhere on that site. So, and a lot of schools take it to their classrooms, because they're finishing up with their deer time or whatever in elementaries and different things. So they just eat it during that last little bit. But I guess I can give kind of just a general real quick history of the company. I am actually, this is my seventh year to work for Keystone. I was in education for about eight years. I was a middle school principal, elementary at Agra for a year. And then before that, I was at Primo Millsdale, a coach and a teacher. While I was at Agra, Agra started looking at Keystone. And I kind of saw that side of it. And I actually kind of went to them and got, went on to staff there. But it started with the ownership group. There's a family that, they actually started way back in the early 90s. They owned Clicks Steakhouse in Pawnee, if you've been there and eaten there. They own that, they sold that, but they started doing fraternities and sororities on OSU's campus in 93. And then they moved to OU, doing some stuff there. And we actually had a, he was a bread man that delivered bread to our sororities and fraternities on OSU's campus. He was a school board member at Coyle, Oklahoma, down next to Langston. And he said, hey, can you bring our kids food? You guys do this for the sororities and fraternities. Can you do it for us? So we started with Coyle, Oklahoma, lots of trial and error, figuring it all out. But we've gone from that one, and they rebid two years ago. So I think they've been with us for seven years. And we're up to 135-ish schools in the state of Oklahoma and South Barber, Kansas is our one out of the state of Oklahoma. But now we stretch from Idabel to Tulsa to Boyce City to Hollis. We go all corners of the state, basically. But we're at all those districts and we have programs that run the game. But we have people that run breakfast, lunch, supper. Some just do breakfast, lunch. Some do breakfast, a grab and go breakfast, lunch, a grab and go lunch, and supper. We, we've started small, but we've kind of grown to where we can do about anything the big billion dollar corporations around the country can do. The, that page with the grandmother standards and the five always, those two back-to-back pages, those are kind of, those are the 10 things that we see as the mission of our company is. The grandmother standards, our owners, they actually base those off their grandma. You treat the kids like your grandma, but that's the basis of it all. But we, any employees that come in, and we want district employees to buy into those same standards, because we're here for the kids, to provide them a meal. Because like I said a lot, we saw it at Coyle whenever they first started. There were a lot of those kids, their two meals, that's all they got were those kids. So they were eaten, and we wanted to make sure they were fed. So that's kind of the basis and the mission behind it. We still have that. Every time we have a big meeting, our CEO will get up and he says, the first day we were in Coyle, I still saw all those kids out there. And tears come to his eye every time. And tears come to my eyes, and I wasn't there. But I've seen too many kids like it. But we're here for those kids. I was in education for years, Ralph was. We all have been in education. And we have, there, it's just a heart for the kids. That's why we're here, is to provide them a good meal. And we do more cooking from scratch. You can look kind of in the back pages of those. We have some of our recipes. And I think the pork loin and the lasagna are in there. On lasagna, we don't take a big frozen one and just bake it. We actually, we actually brown the meat, make the sauce, layer it with the cottage cheese mixture, and we actually build it from scratch and make it. And like Ralph said, I wasn't in food before I started this, but I started kind of the bottom level. So I've learned it all. And now I'm on part of the menu committee, and I help build menus. And we're always trying to see, we're doing committee meetings in schools, talking to the kids, seeing what meals do you like, what don't you like, so that we can help kind of cater to your district. Because your kids in this district are the most important thing to you guys. And we want to make sure that they get taken care of, just like you do. So, and the very back page, there's a little coffee bar thing. That's actually, we have one school that has started doing that for kids. They had kids that were getting in late to class or something, because they're going to get a coffee at the Quick Trip down the thing, down the road. And so we actually have those things available. We, and it is. And so we actually have those things available. We, and it is um, it meets smart snack requirements and everything that you have to meet with the USDA. So we have tons of things available for students as you get going. But like I said, the main thing is getting those kids fed and that's our goal as a company. And um I guess that's kind of it in a nutshell. So if there's any questions or Ralph, if you want to say.
Okay, I'll say a few things.
Yeah.
This is my sixth year with Keystone and I started out with three schools. You know, I did everything at those schools. And the hardest part for me was ordering food. Like I could go in and meet the superintendent, meet the teachers and the principals and the kids and, and love that. That's me, okay? But I'll say the order food, that's kind of important. So you know, that, I, I didn't struggle with it, but you know, it was, it was tough for me. And then after a couple of years, we kind of, Keystone is very visionary, kind of like, well, we have some people that are a lot better at ordering food. We got some other people that are better at whatever. Thank goodness I wasn't the food guy. And you know, it's more like more customer service personnel. I dealt with all the employees, just, you know, keeping schools happy. I mean, I still was involved with food, but it was more of a customer service role. Um I'm, now I have managers underneath that do both. I have the managers that are F and I managers, food and inventory, and they order food and they have, you know, the corp, the, the um other ones that are customer service personnel. I'm a little bit of everything now. I have twelve schools, um South Barber, um Enid This Way, okay? Oakin', Fairview, Allen, Cleo, Enid area, but I've got twelve schools. Um if we were forcing them to begin to come here later on down the road, like I'd be here a week, I would be here weekly. But in the beginning, I mean, I might be here every day. I mean, I don't want to just, you know, it just kind of like, there's some school, like when I first hired, they go, how, what about my schedule? They kind of looked at me and go, Ralph, you know your school more than you do. There's going to be the school over here and you might need to be there every other day. There's a school over here and you, we, we want to make your presence there, but you, once a week, just because of who the employees are and who the cooks are and just the things demanded. And so, you know, I, but you will see, and I, I, I don't have to spend all my time in the cafeteria, the kitchen. I can get out to the schools and I can talk to coaches. I mean, I recognize Mr. Parker's, when my first job was at Carrier, which was, you know, the North Indian Chisholm School District, and I just remember you back from the day whenever I came down. You know, I, so I, I just take care of him. Yeah, Carrier was a, that was a Chisholm junior.
That's right.
It was great, it was Carrier. We bought it a while back. This idea is just amazing. Yeah, it was crazy. Um one, one last thing I want to talk about is kind of how we handled, and I, you know, everybody was different, but kind of how we handled um when the pandemic came out, schools had to be shut down. We best school in, and this is kind of what we do now, we, we tailor kind of everything for the school. I don't want to act like we do a hundred and thirty-five different things. You know, we pretty much have a, a menu that's kind of the same, but we go in and tweak it for each school, just, you know, a little bit. And that's what we had to do during, you know, this period. Um we had places where the school got more involved and the school people wanted to serve it on buses. Fine, that was their call. We made it up. There were other places that wanted to serve every single day. That was just their call, so we did it. There were some schools that wanted to serve two days a week. So on Monday and Tuesday, we gave out four meals, two breakfasts and two lunch. And Wednesday we gave out six. You know, Allen Cleo just amazes me because they have two different, they have two different cafeterias. And their sisters that work at both, yet they would give out like two hu- I mean, they were averaging almost more meals than they were kids because it went from zero to eighteen and just like, it's just amazing to go there and see the kids, you know? I, they asked me to go to Fairview one time and I was at Fairview and we, we served about, each school knows their community better than I do. They said, Ralph, can we go to these, there's a couple of apartment complexes that are lower income apartments. And really, I don't know if the kid, I don't know if their parents would take them to the school. Can we sit there? And so we take a van there and just open the back up once, and I did that. You talk about something that makes you, I'm not saying feel good, because that's kind of, I don't know, just like have another perspective. It's like when I pulled up, it looked like I was driving a snow cone machine. Cause there were these kids coming running at me and just getting that set up and went to it. It was just like, gosh, you know what I'm saying? It was just really neat. Um there was another school where we, the school's kind of been a, oh, I'm not saying an isolated setting. It's just kind of a, they just didn't know how much participation they'd have by, because of where they're located. So we set up in a parking lot, kind of a, a shopping mall, just kind of a little shopping mall. Kind of just set up in the parking lot every single day and there were, there was our trucks and, you know, they, here was the line, they just drove by and, and you know, some schools, you know, it just, it all depended on, every school's a little bit different, but we served, there were some places that we served, you know, you just can't imagine, we were just, we were kind of shocked on how many, you know, that still wanted to do that. And I've got, I have a few that are, they're going to wind down in June, but I'm still doing, of my twelve schools, I still have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight that are still going on. Um four of them are going to go in July and go the way to school start, but we just find a way. You know, it's kind of like, I, I know it sounds like I like to talk and I do, but it's kind of like, on the other hand, I wish you could just see us in action. You know, and I, I know you can't because, you know, you weren't, you don't know what we did, but we just, we, we just find a way, you know? And, and I'm different than Dawn and I'm different from Casey. And that's good because then they tell me stuff like, oh, I never really thought about that. And we, we all just bring different things to the table, I think, with Keystone. And it's just, you know, it's a, it's a wonderful place to work. I mean, I'm just telling you, it's, our CEO, he's just a wonderful, it's just, it's just, it's hard to explain. It's a wonderful place to work and it's, and it, I think it just, and everybody that works for us is kind of empowered. And kind of, kind of our job is to, is to get the school, the kitchen workers to kind of buy in. And that's, sometimes that's real easy. Sometimes it's a little bit more difficult, but you know, it's kind of like, I'll find a way. I'll find a way to get them to, I don't know how, I don't, you know, to at least, uh, maybe to respect me. You know, talking about their grandkids or just find something, you know, a, a, a sport they like or just some of their pastime to find a way to where they kind of buy in, because when they buy in, then we're, then we're rocking. And we, then those are the schools I don't go to very often because it's really, things are nice.
And I think on the COVID thing, I'll just add one last thing. It was nice to have a transition. We actually own our own supply warehouse. So we own a company called K Supply, which, so we don't use Cisco or US Foods or Benny Keith. We have our own. It's a big warehouse down in Shawnee. And we already have food bought through part of the fall semester. We prepped and built up so that whenever everybody else is hitting shortages. And the ones that are located in the city or somewhere else say, now if we can't get out to you or we're having to change your order constantly. We've already got it because we work closely. We build our menus. We're sitting down there looking at their inventory to make sure we got it to be able to supply every school we service. So, so we.
Cause there have been some shortages.
Yeah, and that's been, that's been a nice thing. We know in this fall, the hinged containers, you might want to buy stock in those things because they're going to be sold out all over the country. But we've already, we were down there the other day figuring out how we can still get kids and make them portable to be able to go to the classroom to do whatever the school needs us to do. We, we were there testing everything we had. We had boxes of every product and we're sourcing everything. So I think that is, that's another advantage. When we had this COVID happen, we could transition quick because we had the supplier that knew exactly how we were transitioning.
Looking at your recipes, I noticed that it's a lot of what I'm gonna call home cooking. How much more time does it take for employees to go in? Do they have to go in at four o'clock in the morning, start making the bread raisins? I mean, I'm just asking, does that change their hourlies or?
I think at first it does a little bit, but, but we usually will try to flood with management. I might be in the kitchen helping cook. We'll flood, especially depending on start dates. If you guys started two weeks before other places, we can bring in experienced Keystone people that have worked with us for years. Love the kitchen. So it does on the front end, it takes a little more time to learn.
It's a new learning.
But I think in the end, it's going to be, take longer than people who just take stuff out, bake it.
Sure.
And that's it. It's going to take longer, but once you know, okay, I got to thaw my pork loin two days out. Cook it here, slice it, they have, get it back hot, stuff like that. So once they've learned the system, it goes smooth. But it does get, we get some head, some head pounding on changing of processes. But like I said, we'll, we'll flood with as much help as we need. And I think that's one thing, I'm in kitchens, not near as much as I used to be. But a kitchen that I um used to be a food inventory manager and I'm ordering, I'll walk in now and the ladies will still say, hey, Casey, the forks are over there now, we moved them. Cause I go in and I taste everything that's in that kitchen to make sure, if it's not good to us and everybody in that kitchen, the kid's not going to eat it. But, so it takes some time learning those, but I think when they see Ralph's willing to put on an apron, I'm willing to put on an apron. Our owners will come and put on an apron, right, with them to work alongside. I'll take out the trash, I'll do the dishes. I'll do whatever I got to do to help and get those kids food. So I think we've kind of found that whenever, once we get everybody buy in, it's maybe a little longer at certain times, but it's so much better product.
Oh, sure.
But it.
It's kind of like, just like six to six thirties kind of when they, are typical. You know, I've got someone, school like Carrier, they like to come at five thirty just because they like to do it a little bit earlier, get stuff going in their, you know, their eight hours shift. But everybody's, you know, kind of a, that's kind of the general.
Okay, I, I was just curious.
Yeah, you're right. It's just teaching them what to do in advance. And some already know that, you know, and I mean, not, you know, so that's, you know, be a, be a, be a.
Prep is a huge name on this game.
Yeah, it is. It is at my house too.
Are there any other questions that you want to have for Keystone? I want to thank you all for being here tonight and, and I appreciate all the information that you've given us. And I would like to recommend to the board that we enter a contract um for our next fiscal year, Keystone Food Services.
I'll make that motion.
I second the motion.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Congratulations.
You're ours now.
I know, there we go. You guys have a safe trip. I'll be in touch.
Thank you, Ari.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Six point two, discussion with possible board action vote to enter into contract with John Barry Linder Photography for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year.
So I need to start by thanking Candy Ongren. She really helped me through this process. And um really want to thank Trey and Cat Lund for the service that they gave us um last year. They did a fantastic job. And change is difficult for us. And, and so going through this process was a learning process for me. Uh Mrs. Ongren walked me through that and really helped with the specifications. And so I would recommend to the board that we um contract with John Barry Linder for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year.
So moved.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Six point three, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the revised extra duty schedule, extra duty salary schedule.
Again, I want to thank um Mrs. Kane and Mr. Hanson. We met and reviewed our extra duty salary schedule. Um one of the things that we reviewed and I proposed to them was an increase in our salary range for our um baseball and softball coaches. Now, there was no increase given to the coaches. That was just an increase in the range to make sure that when we pay in that July, June fiscal year, that the, the money stayed within the range. And then also um you'll notice highlighted down there where it says middle school or MS abbreviation. We just, that was really a clerical issue where we added um middle school there because it was up there in baseball, softball. And so we wanted to make sure that it's consistency in case somewhere down the line, we needed to make a change. And if there's no questions, I would recommend approval of the extra duty salary schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Six point four, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the revised extra duty assignments for fiscal year twenty.
Um so we reviewed again uh as a committee, the extra duty assignments. And um by my mistake, I left off Ty Hooper in our last month's board meeting. And that, Ty's done a great job and, and that was just an oversight on my part. Um Ty's been helping with our high school baseball and our middle school baseball. And so that is not a change in any stipend or repay. It's just making sure that we have him on the list this month. And then also moving on to your last page, uh being the second last page, page five. Um Ryan Wilson has helped this summer with our summer baseball. Chance Davis had done that previously. And uh Coach Wilson has stepped in and helped with that. And so that is his extra duty stipend um for June. Are there any questions? If there are none, I would recommend approval of our extra duty assignments for Aquila.
So moved. Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Six point five, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following board policies as referenced.
Okay, you can see these board policies. Um and so what we've done is we're breaking these policies down into letter groups. And so this month would be um policies B and C. Um I've reviewed these with Mr. Hanson and Mrs. McDermott. Um all of these recommended policy changes um have been made by the Oklahoma School Board Association attorney. And so they have been vetted. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to go through any of those, but if not, I would recommend the approval of policies B through C. I make a motion that we approve the policies.
I'll second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Six point six, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following activity fund reports for fiscal year twenty-one. Six point, six point one, activity fund charter accounts. Do we vote on each one?
We can, we can do all.
Yeah, vote on all of them.
Yeah, we can do all three.
Together.
Yes, and then vote on all. That's correct.
Let me think, okay. We've added a couple things or are they on here?
So the activity fund charter accounts.
Is nothing new on yet.
We have two things on our activity fund charter accounts. You have eight oh four. I'll pull that up here for you to look at.
Yeah. You're a binocular.
Okay, eight oh four, football operation. That's a new account. And we have an account set up for basketball. And that account is used to pay for officials and startup and game. And so to help we do the distribution of football and to make that process cleaner for Mrs. Durkey, we want to separate that operational account where we can use that for our officials and our game day operations. So that's what eight oh four will be. And then nine forty, so down here at the bottom, that is that new, well, not new, that's your, that's your sixth grader. So that's their activity account. So that's the seniors of twenty twenty-seven.
So that actually, any funding that that class had left over, that they didn't utilize, it goes to the sixth graders? Then they carry it all the way back up till they graduate. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
So the account expenditures.
Okay, the activity account approved expenditures, this is the list of approved expenditures for each one of these activity accounts. And so you can see um none of the, there, there's nothing that, all of these are routine. No real changes that we have to any of these approved expenditures out of their activity accounts.
For each one of them, exactly the same, all sixty-one?
Um no, and you know, some of them will go through and add um variously, but from year to year, does it change much? No, I would say that it does not.
Some have teen camps, some do not.
Right.
Which is fine. I mean, obviously it wouldn't be the same for everybody. Activity fund sources of revenue.
Okay, our activity fund sources of revenue. So these are the ways our activity funds can replenish their accounts. And these are the same that they have been. These are all routine.
Any discussion or entertain a motion? Approved.
I make a motion, we approve the activity fund reports for fiscal year twenty-one as referenced in six point six one, six point six, point two, six point six, point three.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Six point seven, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the investment resolution for fiscal year 21.
This is our policy, policy CDA. And our Wicks County Treasurer and his state of banning, and this is what allows him to provide that service for us. If there's no questions, I would recommend the approval of our management and investment funds.
So moved.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Six point eight, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the job assignments and duties for fiscal year 21.
Okay, these are our routine job assignments that we have for central office. And I just want to make note for you all of a couple of new assignments. Mrs. Webster, our new Lincoln principal, will be our professional development coordinator. Mr. Smith, our new high school principal, will be our textbook coordinator. Mrs. Durkey has taken over some of our child nutrition responsibility. She will kind of act as liaison on some of those things with our food service company.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to accept six point eight as presented.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Six point nine, discussion with possible board action vote to approve certified and non-certified personnel to provide extended school year special education services from July 1 to August 7, 2020.
So the attached list is our personnel that will be working with our special education students for the month of July through August. It is our special education teachers, Don Beal, Marcus Mead, Brandon Peace, speech therapist Hattie Potter, and then support employees, Melani Kern and Lauren Neck. These have all worked previously in June, so I'd recommend their approval for July to August 7.
So moved.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Six point ten, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the Alvin Public Schools Board of Education Title III Consortium Member District to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Board of Education of Blackwell Public Schools, Title III Consortium Lead Fiscal Agent. For the purpose of creating a Title III Part A consortium.
So we've been a part of this consortium for the last few years. And how this works is Blackwell, any school that receives less than $10,000 from the State Department can join and cooperate with other school districts. They purchase the equipment for EL students and then they send it to us and document it. And so, we had 51 EL students last year and we've identified, now we have 55 EL students. We used that money to purchase Chromebooks last year. Talking with Mrs. Phillips as we move forward, translation devices will be an area that we would use some of this consortium money to help our EL students. If there are no questions, I would recommend that Alvin Public Schools join this consortium, Title III agreement.
I make a motion that we approve six point ten.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Six point eleven, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following contracts for fiscal year 21. We'll approve those all with one motion. Is that all right?
Yes.
Six point eleven, Alfa County Commissioners.
So Alfa County Commissioners, we have been asked by them to help with some of the fees on any protests. And so this has increased our cost by about $2,000. But the other side of that is we expect to see more collection. And so this is something that I think provides value to our district and that we would certainly do us, serve us well to be a part of this contract.
Circle H LLC Cleaning Services?
Circle H LL Cleaning is for our contract cleaning with the high school in Lincoln Elementary. We met this week and were able to begin discussing some of the sanitation and extra sanitation and cleaning that we're going to be doing at the high school and at Lincoln Elementary for this next school year. It has been a good service for our district.
Ignite Physical Therapy and Sports Rehab.
Ignite Physical Therapy and Sports Rehab has provided our physical therapy for our students. We have had some really positive communication with, from the community, but also from our staff and our students. They have provided really good physical therapy service for our kids.
Six point eleven point four is our Oklahoma Schools Assurance Group, OSIG, for our workers' compensation insurance.
So workers' compensation insurance, you can see that our quote has gone up, 29,000. That is a result of some more workers' comp claims that we've had. And so we look to address some of those through some training. Not only through our staff meetings, but professional development throughout the year to reduce that number.
Six eleven point five, Oklahoma Schools Insurance Group, OSIG, liability and vehicle insurance.
So our OSIG agreement, OSIG's one of the most stable and secure options that we have in the state of our two options. You can see that there was an increase in our premium, 22%. And so this is, you know, obviously due to an increase in value, but also the economy. And so, you know, talking to Mr. Young, we hope to see that be reduced and then provide credits like they have in the past. But, but we're going to need some good years ahead of us for that to happen.
What dollar amount does that reflect?
A hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-six.
An increase.
Oh, in, no, that's the total, that's not an increase. I would have to go back and I can get that number for you.
That's fine. Forgot to ask you that. All right, let's hear a motion to approve those six point eleven.
Make a motion and we approve six point eleven point one through six point eleven point five. Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Through new business?
No, ma'am.
Signing documents early approved by earlier, earlier approved, documents approved by earlier action. And I will literally have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.